All right, everyone, it's 5:33, so we'll go ahead and get started. Just a few housekeeping items to let you know about before we begin. This meeting is being recorded and will be posted on the supervisor's website, on the county's website, and on his Facebook page. Everyone is muted upon arrival, and when we get to the question and answer portion of the meeting, you will be able to raise your hand in Zoom. And then when you're called on, you'll be asked to unmute yourself, and then you can begin asking your question. If you are joining us by telephone, you can raise your hand by pressing star nine. And when you are called on to unmute yourself, you can press star six to do so. I'll repeat those instructions again later when we have our first opportunity for questions. And with that, I'll turn it over to you, Supervisor.
Thanks, Jam, and good evening to everyone. And thank you for joining us at this District 5 Town Hall meet tonight. I know that we're all on Zoom quite a bit these days, so I appreciate your willingness to dedicate part of your evening to being with us. Tonight, we're going to have presentations from Steve Weisner, our Assistant Director of County Public Works, who will give us an update on road repairs throughout the valley, and Dave Reed, our Director of the County Office of Response, Recovery, and Resilience, also known as OR3, who will provide an update on fire recovery and other initiatives. We will have time for questions directly after each presentation, and then again at the end. And as you've heard from my analyst, J.M. Brown, he's going to be moderating the question and answers. But before Steve begins, I just want to let the community know about some of the things aside from the road repairs and the fire recovery that we've been working on in our office for quite a while now, in addition to the recovery work alongside OR3 and District 3 Supervisor Ryan Coonerty. Let's start with PG&E. This has been a very trying year with PG&E, to say the least, and our county really has taken our response very seriously. After PG&E cut down thousands of trees on private property in the Burn Scarb, Boulder Creek in particular, and Bonney Dune in 2020, the Board of Supervisors approved filing a formal complaint against PG&E at the California Public Utilities Commission. This is an unheard-of step for a county to take, but it was the right thing to do, and I feel very good about it. And it got PG&E's attention. We're working to ensure that the wood gets cleaned up, and we are in communications with PG&E right now on how to resolve this. We've gotten a very good letter back, I think, from the PUC chairman, in fact. I sent a letter to the Public Utilities Commission President Maryville Batchery, stating our deep concerns about PG&E's fast-trip settings that I know you've all heard about, that have caused numerous power outages during the last couple of months. Since then, she has issued a new directive against PG&E with requirements to improve that system, and outlined those in the letter back to me this week. I was very pleased with that. It was very strong and straightforward that they mean to do something. And so let's see if they do it. But I feel very good about the response that she gave us. Secondly, I wanted to talk about Big Basin Water. Switching over to that subject, I want to thank the San Remesov Valley Water District Board for its decision last week at the meeting that I was at to allow District Manager Rick Rogers, who does a terrific job for the district, leading that district, to explore consolidation with the SLV Water District and Big Basin Water Company. I also want to thank the district for making repairs on Big Basin's behalf and supplying the emergency water to the community during the recent main break that they had. I visited some people as they were collecting their water at the district station in downtown Boulder Creek. We have been encouraging consolidation between San Remesov Valley Water District and Big Basin for more than a year now, in conjunction with Senator Laird and the Seminole and Stone. My office has also been in close contact with the state water board, urging them to take seriously the corrective actions that really are needed within the Big Basin system. There's about just short of 500 connections there. We look forward to helping the San Remesov Valley Water District explore consolidation. It's going to take some time, and we'll work to identify grants to reduce the cost to repairs in that endeavor. The Big Basin Water District is a private company, and it's overseen by the state, not the county. And so that complicates the direct involvement that we might have been able to get into early on. But believe me, we have been involved from the start for more than a year now. Meanwhile, the debris flow evacuations. The winter has begun, and while we need the rain to reduce the fire danger and recharge our groundwater, we must really alert people to the dangers of the fast-moving rain, what the fast-moving rain can bring to the area. We are grateful that there was no debris flows in the night of October 24th, when the storm was predicted to present the kind of conditions that could lead to a debris flow situation. 3,300 properties were asked to evacuate, and luckily, there was no event. Not many of those 3,300 left, less than a majority for sure. But that's all right. We want to be safe rather than safe than possibly sorry. So we recognize the challenges posed by the evacuations to our customers, our constituents, and appreciate the cooperation of our residents when we worked through this first couple of years after the fire that really heightened the possibility of those slides. And really, many thanks go out to our county emergency response team, the Red Cross, City of Scotts Valley, San Remesov Valley Unified School District, and other community organizations who coordinated the response to that storm. Lastly, and very briefly, on redistricting. You may have heard about that. It's happening in state and federal offices as well. And there is a redistricting commission that oversees that at the state and federal level. The county looks at the five supervisory districts. And as you may have read, we're all going through this, and we discussed this topic today. And we'll be bringing it to the county supervisors for a final vote, I hope, on November 16th. There were some late proposals that came in today, and so we were hopeful maybe we could approve the new lines. But we're going to take another look at... The majority of the board wanted to take another look at the possibilities, some of those that were mentioned today. So with that, I did want to mention those issues that are outside of roads and the fire recovery. So now I'd like to introduce Steve Weisner to give an update on roads. He is the Deputy Director, Assistant Director of County Public Works. It's done a phenomenal job. He is a San Remesov Valley resident. And if you call me, or him, or Jam, or somebody, believe me, you'll get a response, I believe, very quickly. So with that, Steve, if you could go ahead and just present the overview of the road situation in the San Remesov Valley. And thank you for everything you've done. You've been terrific at the response, as has your whole Public Works team overall. So I appreciate it very much.
Thank you, Bruce. I really appreciate you having me here this evening to share a little bit about county roads in the valley. We've been very busy this past year. Public Works has been... Hopefully, you all have seen us out there on the roadways. I'm going to go ahead and share my screen. I have a small presentation here. So again, like Bruce said, my name is Steve Weisner. I work for Department of Public Works. I'm the Assistant Director here in charge of our 600-mile road network that we maintain throughout the county. I've been with the county for about 20 years now, and I've been in roads the whole time, so I know the roads pretty well. And I'm sure you all know your roads pretty well, too, because that's how we get in and out, and this is how we do everything. All of our lives are lived getting to and from everywhere we go on our county roads. So this evening, I'm going to cover a little bit of the storm damage repair work that we've done over the past year. I'm going to briefly touch on some of the fire recovery efforts that our department has done, very specific to county-maintained roads. And then lastly, I'll touch on some of the pavement management work that we've been doing in the valley as well. There'll be time for questions, I think, at the end of my presentation. So I don't have to remind everyone here how bad our winter was in 2016-17. It seemed like the rain all came at once. And in the end, we had a tremendous amount of damage to our entire road system. We had over 200 sites damaged, actually. But in the end, we were able to negotiate funding with our state and federal damage relief partners to fund 194 storm damage sites. That's quite a task, and it's been several years since it happened. But for our department to put out 20, 30-plus projects a year is quite a bit. And so we've completed to date about 83 sites, and we presently have about 13 in construction. We estimate that the total, once we're finally done with all the projects in the next few years, that the total ticket will be about $140 million in damage. And these sites do take a long time to repair sometimes. We've got to go through full environmental, full approvals with our state and federal partners. That's why you see sometimes they do sit for two, three, four years at a time before we get to them, because we're working through that process to get permits and get all the funding. So I'm just going to cover a few of the recent ones. All of these sites have been repaired in about the last 12 to 16 months. I'm going to start with some critical projects that we completed in Lompico this past year. As some of you may know, that's a one-way-in, one-way-out road, so it's real critical to get those sites repaired as quickly as we can. So here's a couple on Lompico. And then in that same area of the valley, East San Yanni Road, which is a connector that goes all the way up to Summit, right? Another way in and out of our valley. So it's critical to keep East San Yanni open as well. So there's three sites there, East San Yanni. If you can see any of these photos, you can see a little bit of the drama. And then here's a couple more on East San Yanni. And as you get up towards Summit, we call it Upper San Yanni. So there's five significant repairs we've done there just in the last year. And then working our way up the valley, we're active out on Alba. This one was recently completed. This is post mile 1.58. And you see there's that pattern here of the type of damage that we see on our roads. And I know you all have driven by them several times. This is one we recently repaired on Hubbard Gulch. And then one up towards Boulder Creek, just right off Highway 9 there, Lorenzo Avenue. This one had been sitting for quite some time and involved the culvert as well. That was actually just recently completed within the last month. And up on Jameson, we had this project going when the fire hit. We were repairing three significant sites on Jameson. We had to retreat and pull off to let some of the fire activity and recovery efforts up there until we got back in and started repairing. But these are big sites. So we prepared one, two, three, four significant sites on Jameson Creek Road. And so if you drive Jameson now, you can get pretty much from the top to the bottom in a much better fashion than you could before all these repairs were done. And so we're continuing. We've got... This is the projects that are actually in construction. So various states right now, our contractors have probably pulled off a little bit because of the rain. If we can't get them done this year, we'll complete them next year. These are several on Alba and Fulton Empire Road as well. So we're really working on these connectors that connect Highway 9 up to Empire Grade. We recognize how important they are for connectivity for valley residents. And this is a repair that we're actively engaged with now on Two Bar Road. We know that we still have several left to do. We actually got out there and started this project on Bear Creek Road. It's actually the last one left. We have probably done seven different sites on Bear Creek Road in the last few years. We got out there, and then there was a conflict with the water line up there. So we've delayed this project. If you drive Bear Creek Road, you've seen that the stop signs are still up, and we've delayed it till next year. Once the water company gets in there, and SLV Water does their thing, then we'll be able to go in and make this repair. And so here's a list of a bunch of projects that we still have left to do in the valley. And so this is comprised of all the ones that we have left county-wide as well. And it's a fairly robust list. But we anticipate between next summer's construction season, 2022, and 2024, we should be able to complete the rest of these sites. So let's hopefully get enough rain to recharge our aquifers, but not so much rain that we get a whole nother slate of storm damage repairs to do. Okay, I'm just going to briefly touch on some of the fire recovery efforts that county roads has been up to. Just a little bit of data. We had over four... So we had about 50 miles of roads, county-maintained roads, that were impacted in the burn zone. And we had over 400 signs that burned. And we had 32 culverts that basically either melted or were damaged to a point where we had to replace them. We had one bridge, actually, that was wooden structure on the swamp roadside that burned out. We put a temporary bridge up, and we're in the process of planning and designing a permanent replacement there. And we had nearly 4,000 feet of guardrail. And so you drive around up on Empire Grade and down Jameson, some of these other roads, you'll notice they're still not repaired. We actually do have a contract in place. We have a contractor ready to go. All of our materials are getting caught up in this whole supply issue. And they're probably sitting on ships somewhere. And so we're waiting for that stuff to come in. And once it does, we'll get to fixing all the guardrail. So just a few little photos of some of the work. This is the bridge out there on Mill Creek, Swan area. Couple examples of what the guardrails look like when the wood posts burn away. And I just want to touch on one of these other issues that is a bit of an unintended consequence of all the activity that's gone on within the fire zone. We're starting to see the roads that are deteriorating at a much more rapid rate than we've ever seen. And they're largely due to the vast quantity of debris trucks that have been moving material in and out of our neighborhoods. And so we saw this one on the left here, Swan. It looked great, and then two days later, it looked like this. So once they start to go, they go really fast. So we've gone out and actually quantified what type of damage that we're seeing out there from the debris removal activities. And it's about 17 roads, and we estimate it's going to be about $4.4 million to repair these roads. And a lot of them are up in the valley. You recognize Acorn Drive. Sorry for this kind of fuzzy spreadsheet that I threw in there, but a lot of this stuff is up in the Boulder Creek area, Boulder Brook Drive, and China Grade. So we're actively engaged right now with our federal and state partners to try to fund these repairs on county-maintained roads. We are also aware that a lot of private roads have also been damaged by the debris removal activities. And we're advocating for funding for those as well. Dave Reed is going to touch upon that, I think, in his presentation. So I'll just leave it at that. But we're trying to get all these roads fixed. Okay, so that just leads me to the pavement management program that we've been so fortunate to have Measure D come on board. When voters passed this measure in 2016, that combined with some of the state and federal funding that we get to resurface our roads, it's really increased our ability to get our roads repaired. And so just some of the few projects that we've done in the last about year, 16 months, real critical ones. Mount Herman Road, Bram Hill Road. These are our major collectors or minor arterials, the roads that bring us in and out of the valley, right? And so you probably noticed the work we've done on Mount Herman and Bram Hill. But also, we're focusing on some of the interior roads as well, some of the minor collector roads. Glen Arbor and Heen, you see here, they were all just recently done as well. And another project that's been long-term, really, these folks have waited for a real long time to get their resurfaced. And this is East San Yanni. And again, East San Yanni is pretty critical in that it connects Summit down into the valley, and it's another way for us to all get out of the valley, should we need to. And so these are just a few of the before-and-after pictures that I drew in here, just for a little bit of eye candy for black asphalt, if you will. And so that kind of leads me to some of the more local roads that we've been focusing in on. Measure D has really brought us the ability to start resurfacing some of our neighborhood streets. We can't do them all in one year. And you've noticed that we're starting to pick off roads. This is coming up on our fourth season of Measure D projects. And so for the first couple, we worked on the downtown course of Boulder Creek, downtown Ben Loman, downtown Felton. And then now what you see is we're starting to hit some of the roads that are on the outskirts of the downtown areas. And we will continue to kind of work our way outwards as we plan for these Measure D projects. And so these were ones that we just delivered this past summer on Boulder Creek. We did quite a few roads off of 236 and south of the downtown area off of Highway 9. We were able to do a little bit of work in Ben Loman. This actually came up as a bit of a surprise. The water district came in and decided to tear up the roads and redo some of the pipes in this area. And so we decided to take a little bit of the Measure D money and combine it with some of the funding that they had to resurface just a small neighborhood off of Highway 9 north of Alba there. And then so this is what we have on slate for Measure D for 2022. We're going to focus in on Ben Loman, on some of the outskirts of the downtown area and Ben Loman, starting to hit some of the roads off of Glen Arbor that are adjacent to some of the work that we've done the past couple of years. And we're going to be able to do all of Quell Hall, which is great. That's another pretty critical connector that connects Glen Arbor over to Zani. And these are ways to get around Highway 9 when Highway 9 has problems. So that's my presentation. I really appreciate everyone here and all of your involvement. I would invite you, if you have any questions about roads, if you can't get them answered tonight, to call the Department of Public Works. You can certainly ask for me, and as Bruce said, we try to be very responsive. And so with that, I'll stop sharing my presentation and take any questions out anybody might.
Great, thank you, Steve. Just to remind everyone about how to ask a question, you can raise your hand in Zoom. There's a function to do that in Zoom. And then when you are called upon, you'll be asked to unmute, and then you can begin speaking. And if you're joining us by phone, you can raise your hand by pressing star nine. And then when you're called on, pressing star six to unmute yourself. So let's see if we have any questions on roads. We do have one from Molly. So Molly, I'm going to ask you to unmute. And you're unmuted.
Okay, great. Thank you very much. My name is Molly Sullivan, and I live in Boulder Creek. And I take Bear Creek Road. Before the pandemic, I was taking it four days a week to go to San Jose. Since the pandemic, it's like one day a week, but in January, we'll be ramping back up to three days a week. And my concern about Bear Creek Road is that, overall, the road itself just seems to be crumbling. You know, I will drive down the road and notice that there's a massive pothole, and then there's another massive pothole. And yes, they get filled and fixed, but I'm having to watch my mileage to know to when to swerve for the pothole. Like, okay, at the 10-mile mark, I know I'm going to have to swerve to this pothole. I'm also really concerned about the strength of this road, because if we have another storm like we did in 2016, 2017, my belief is that this road will not survive. It seems weak in a lot of parts. I feel sometimes the road dips down where I think it's going to just kind of not... It dips down and where I feel it's going to crumble. It's not a very sturdy road at all. And I know that there's the project where the water line, once that gets fixed, it's going to be worked on. But I wanted to know if there's going to be any other future projects to maybe buff up that road completely, because it is a very shaky road to me. I just don't know if it would survive another storm like we had back in 2016, 2017.
Thanks, Molly. Steve?
Yeah, thank you, Molly. I appreciate your comments. I mean, we recognize that Bear Creek Road is like one of the most important roads in the valley. It really connects Boulder Creek up to Summit and over to Santa Clara County. We know it gets a tremendous amount of traffic, like eight to 10,000 cars a day that commute on Bear Creek Road. And so we do focus a lot on it. But to your point that it is fragile in some areas, I mean, it is a mountainous road that resides next to the creek in some areas. And it's in very, very steep terrain that geologically is challenged. We can't change the geology of the area. But when we get damaged, we do try to repair it in a way that it's not going to get damaged again. And what I'll mention about Bear Creek Road is that it's a federal-aided route. It's a minor arterial. It's a really important road. And it's super important for us to capture as much federal dollars as we can to maintain Bear Creek Road. These monies come through the Regional Transportation Commission to us, and we often have to compete for these funds. And so we put our best foot forward every single time. And what I know about Bear Creek Road, as far as its maintenance goes, is we did focus on the upper area between post mile five and 10. And so I think the road surface in those areas are in pretty good shape. But we do recognize that lower Bear Creek Road is in need of some resurfacing. And it's definitely on our priority list. And we will be submitting for grants within the next couple of years to resurface Bear Creek Road. That said, again, it's a fragile road, and our limited resources will only go so far. And so we don't preemptively go out there and start building and retaining walls where we think something bad might happen. We have to limp the road along, maintain it as best as we can. And then when we get a storm like 2016, 17, it's not a surprise to us that we get five to seven spots where there's extreme amount of damage. But we're dedicated to keeping it repaired and keeping the road up and running. And as you see that, we've been able to repair, I think, around seven projects out there. So thanks for your comments. They're well taken.
Thanks, Steve. Thanks, Molly, for the question. Okay, I'll call on Karen Vitale next.
Hi, how are you, Jam?
Good.
Good, good, good. It's good to hear your voice again. I have a question about the acorns. So I saw on the chart that went up that there was specific reference to 614, you know, potholes or areas that needed to be dug out around 614 and 644 Acorn. But we're on the third Acorn, and there's a bunch of potholes. There were marked years ago. It seemed like they didn't change a whole bunch after that. And I know there's a lot of complexity, because Forest Springs Neighborhood is trying to figure out how to deal with its water issues and water distribution, and there may be more digging. It's a very complicated issue. I wondered, how is the county coordinating? And what are the plans for dealing with the acorns more than just those right outside those two addresses that are pretty much close to the top of where three and four transition?
So I will tell you, we are very familiar with the three different acorns. And I know that it's a narrow road that is in need of some work. The crews do go up there, and they do try to fill the potholes as they come up. Right now, there's no plan or funding allocated for any of the acorns to be resurfaced. But what my hope is, is that as we spider our way out from the downtown areas and the roads that actually have higher volumes, which is really our focus, that we'll be able to hit some of these roads that have much lower volumes on them, that are more like neighborhood streets. And our plan is only five years at a time. And so I would say, sit tight, but I would not hesitate to ask you to call the road department as potholes or any type of surface damage occurs, because we will get out there and try and repair that. And we're definitely committed to keeping the full width open. So thank you for your comments.
Great, thank you. And Dave Reed, did you want to add something brief to that?
Yeah, I was just going to say for those, Karen, and those in the Forest Springs Neighborhood, as you know, the consolidation with SLV Water is moving along. And they were recently awarded some significant funds to help with the consolidation of Forest Springs and Bracken Bray. So that may include funds to do some infrastructure improvement. And if there is infrastructure improvement, that obviously means it's going to be worked on in the roadway. And there may be opportunities through that upgrade process to address some of these issues. So I think Steve will work with SLV Water as that project works its way through. But let's hope that that's an additive or a helpful thing on many levels.
Yeah, and I might add, it's a thrill. Just in the last four or five days, a grant has been received. So that's great news to get us on our way to do that, get the water district in particular. But a spinoff would probably come along with it, I think, for improving the roads as well.
Great, okay. Thank you, everyone. Thanks again, Karen, for the question. And I'll now call on Jeanette Cook, and you can unmute.
Okay, I'm unmuted. So thank you. Thank you, Steve, for the great presentation. You may remember me. I live on Nelson Road, which is in Scotts Valley, but also part of District 5. And I was really happy to see that we were on your list at the very bottom, but we're on the list. And it looked like there were two places to be repaired. And I don't know if you know off the top of your head, is it the temporary bridge, or is it the washout that's been there for a long time but is steadily worsening?
So thank you for your questions, Jeanette. I do remember you, and we haven't forgotten about Nelson. And that's one of the more complex projects, actually. We lost the entire road at that location. And that's one of the more complex projects. Actually, we lost the entire road at that location. And we weren't able to deploy some flat car temporary bridges that were owned by the county. We got created. That was early in the storm, actually, that we did that. And, and then the other site is right before. So basically it includes both of them. So we'll be repairing as you approach the bridge and we'll be putting in a whole granite crossing. And so, yeah, you did see that it's on our list. It was only at the bottom of the list because I think possibly alphabetical order. But, but at any rate, it's, we're working on it. It's going to be probably a couple more years before we get to that one. I think it's going to be summer 2023.
Yeah, it did say 2023. So is there, I mean, I guess there's always a chance it might get further delayed, but it is, is it like funded and everything at this point?
Yeah, that's the good news. It's totally funded. We're in design on it. And it's really, there's some very complex environmental issues there because of the creek itself.
Okay, thanks, Jeanette, for the question. Okay, we'll call on Nicole. We'll make this the last question for Rhodes, because I know folks are likely to want to hear a very full presentation about fire recovery. So Nicole, let me find you in our list here, and then I will ask you to unmute. There you are. Sorry, I couldn't find you. Okay. You should be able to unmute now.
Hi, good evening. I'm Nicole from Bracken Bray, and we are very much part of this consolidation with SLV. I think we have a different situation than Forest Springs because our roads are private and we have suffered major deterioration between the fire initial response with the utility vehicles and the fire response trucks and then with the Phase Two. And so we are seeking help to rebuild those roads after our homeowners finally get their permits and stuff like that. And then after the roads, you know, get torn up for the mainline upgrade. And so we definitely would like to work with Steve and Dave to find out what opportunities we can have in regards to doing that. I was curious to know about the measure that deals with the pavement, because we are private. I'm assuming we pay into it as taxpayers. How communities such as us get involved in hopefully getting some assistance? That's my question.
Yeah, so as you noted, Bracken Bray's private roads. And I think I'll have Dave kind of address that in his, in his presentation, because I think that he's also got an element of other private roads as well that are going to be seeking help for their roads as well. So sit tight, Nicole. I appreciate your patience. I know it's difficult to watch your roads get torn up, but it is smart to wait until after all the work's done and then actually do the repairs at the end. And then the one thing I'll say is, JM, I'll go ahead and put my email address in the chat to everyone. And I see that there's other hands up. I see Theo, you have your head up. If you guys want to email me your questions, I will do everything I can to get you good answers back. And that's really for anybody on the call. Please feel free to email me.
Great. Thanks, Steve. Appreciate it. Supervisor, would you like to take Theo's question?
Yeah, I think, I think, yeah.
Okay.
There's just one more, I think.
Okay, no problem. Okay, Theo, you can unmute.
Thank you. I'm not quite sure who to direct my question to. My house on Boulder Brook Drive, I see made the list. Had only minor damage from the fire, but I'm located below many lost homes. My property has a retaining wall that faces the road. And it was damaged by the traffic from the heavy machinery during debris removal. The wall was not directly damaged by impact, but the compression of the road from the traffic has caused the damage. So I'm wondering what recourse I may have to recoup the repair costs.
So Theo, remind me, are you on the private portion of Boulder Brook?
Well, I'm not sure which portions are private and public, but I'm below my drone that goes up to the water plant.
Okay, I believe that is, was a private wall, but I tell you what, let me, like I said, I'm gonna go ahead and leave my email address here. If you email me your address and kind of give me an idea of what wall we're talking about, I'll be happy to get back to you with what I know. If it's a public facility, then we're gonna repair it. But if it's a private retaining wall, I think it'd be up to whoever, you know, whoever's property is on to make sure that that's included in their fire repair wear as well. So.
There's a private wall. It's on, it's my private wall, but it was damaged by the debris removal.
Okay, so then again, I think I'm gonna have Dave go ahead and address that in his presentation as well. Thank you for your questions. And thank you, everyone. I really appreciate your participation. And Bruce, thank you very much for having me this evening.
Thank you for your time.
All right. Thank you, Steve. Supervisor, I'll turn it back over.
Yeah, I'd like to introduce, reintroduce Dave Reed, the Director of the County's Office of Response Recovery and Resilience. Supervisor Coonerty and I recommended the board establish this office to manage the fire recovery and a host of other issues designed to increase the county's preparedness for resiliency and to natural disasters and climate change. Dave has done a phenomenal job. You've, many of you have seen him up there, I know, in the valley. He's got a lot on his plate and he has a, just a really knack to know where to go to seek some funding or cooperative efforts of one type or another. He's been fantastic for the county. So thank you, Dave, again, for your joining us this evening. And you can take it over.
Thank you, Supervisor. Good evening, everyone. It's good to see some familiar faces and names. I hope you're all doing well tonight. And I'm gonna go through a presentation, so I'm gonna share my screen. Some of the information may be familiar to folks, but what I recognize is that there's, even, even today, I spoke with a constituent who hasn't started the rebuild process. So so I'm gonna go through things a little bit from the front end of the rebuild, but also a few other items as well. So just by way of a quick agenda, I want to start off by introducing a new staff member to our office. Tatiana Brennan is on the, in the meeting today. She's our new Recovery and Resilience Analyst. So I'm super excited to have Tatiana in on our team. And many of you will start to see her name and see her face in our recovery efforts. So thank you, Tatiana, for joining us. Steve Weisner mentioned road damage. And to Theo, your, your question about the road damage, I'll, I'll put in the chat a link to our OR3 website location where you can get the details on filing a damage claim. But what we have found, I think many of you know this, but what we have found and what Steve alluded to is that the debris removal operations process, while critical for many to save money that you folks didn't have, did a significant amount of road damage to our public county maintained road network, as Steve said, $4.4 million. But also a lot of damage to private roads and private property like Theo's wall. Though Steve and Matt, in particular, Matt Machado, the Director of Public Works, have been doing an amazing job advocating for us at the state and local level. We have not gotten the response that I feel like we deserve in regards to this damage. So next Tuesday, we are gonna have a board meeting. I'll be giving a very short presentation, some of the content which you saw tonight from Steve, presenting to the board and asking the board to give us direction to advocate in person with our legislative delegation or Congresswoman, Assistant's Office, Assembly Member Mark Stone's office, and Senator Laird's office, as well as Bruce and Ryan, Supervisor McPherson and Supervisor Coonerty. We need to meet in person with our state CalOES representatives to try and get them to move off of the position that they've had, which is candidly to deny the damage claims that many of you have filed. FEMA has denied our claims for the damage, stating explicitly that they don't think that FEMA should pay for it because it's damage done by Anvil during their debris removal process and that the state should cover those costs. So we need to escalate and elevate this issue on behalf of all of our fire families as well as the county. And so that item next Tuesday is an opportunity for any of you who have lived through that dance storm, that road damage experience to voice your, your experience. We encourage you to do that. And we want to just lend more effort to trying to get the state and Anvil to pay for some of this road damage. And then I'm gonna go through a quick rebuild path stuff. We'll talk a little bit about the CZ rebuild directive, Atkins debris flow study, and then just to reiterate a few things as Supervisor McPherson mentioned around debris flow winter preparations. So I'm gonna go through, there's a lot of words in the slides. JM, from, from Bruce's office, will put this presentation up on the website. We'll try and also get it up on the OR3 website, so you can review it a little bit slower. But by way of starting, I wanted to just reiterate the rebuild path for folks. Some folks are deep into this path and others have not started. So as a reminder, the best place to start is a pre-application meeting with our Recovery Permit Center. That's the standalone permit support center that helps all fire families as well as purchasers of land in the CZ burn area navigate the permit and rebuild process. So that phone number there is a great way to start if you haven't engaged with them. The next step is really getting your preclearances. And what those are, there's three preclearances. Many of you know this. There's septic preclearance requirement, a fire, water, so the environmental health is septic and water requirements, fire, and then geologic. But to do that, you need a site plan. The Long Term Recovery Group has gotten a deal with GetASitePlan.com and they're familiar with what is required here at the county. So if you haven't done that yet, you can go to that website listed there. And there's a, and there's a discount code to getting those site plans. So once you get the site plan, you can submit and try and get your preclearances. As I said, there's three of those, the environmental health, which deals with public, your water and your sewer. Some of you, as we discussed, are on public water. Some of you are on public sewer or municipal sewer of some sort. A couple neighborhoods that are in that set situation. And then many of you are on septic and private wells. So just making sure that those things are in working order is the primary goal. One important note that has come up a couple different times and is related to the, the new local area management plan that was adopted, the LAMP, that many folks have heard about. In some conversations I've had with the Recovery Permit Center, they have said that folks have come in and said they want to build an ADU and another, in their main house, and they want to do all of this work. And it exceeds the capacity of the existing septic system. And that means that they're required to build a new septic system. And if you're required to build a new septic system because you're increasing the size of your home over what it was, you will be subject to the new code requirements. And what some fire families have found is that those new requirements are cross prohibitive. So they've had to scale back their project to be more in kind with what was there before. So keep those things in mind as you evaluate how you want to rebuild. The second one is the geologic hazard clearance. I'll go into this in a little bit more detail, but for many of you familiar with this, there's a couple different options. Some folks get screened out of that requirement. Others need a geologic hazard assessment. And then some folks need a full geologic report. I can answer questions, but again, you can review some of this content once it's posted online. The last one for folks in the valley is the fire access clearance. And for many of you, this, we thought this was going to be the biggest hurdle at the front end of the rebuild process, but what we know to be true is that many of the fire districts, Boulder Creek, Ben Loman, Felton, have been issuing the clearances for everyone without issue. So generally speaking, this has been an easy clearance for folks to get. Once you get those three clearances, you can submit your building plans for your home and still it's about a seven to 10 day turnaround to getting your building permit once you submit your building plans. A little bit of detail on the CZ rebuild directive, we had a community meeting a little less than a month ago, but just to go over this for folks, this is the path that you can take if you don't want to follow our Chapter 1610 requirements. And you want to build and get your clearance without having to do a site specific geologic report. If you're in a hazardous area, there are ways in which you can substitute that report, and I'll go get into that in a second. But for those who want to build in the CZ, use the CZ rebuild directive. A couple key things about eligibility. You need to have owned the property at the time of the fire. And the property needed to be considered legal and non, or legal non-conforming based on construction before 1986. The other piece that's important, and I know this has come up with a couple folks in the valley, is that you're, you need to be rebuilding within 10% of the original structure size. So if you're building a much larger home, then you're not eligible for this, this resource. And then the last thing is the recording of a notice of geologic hazards. This document, this, this slide, folks have probably seen this before. I won't go into too much detail, but just to highlight that if you do choose to use the CZ rebuild directive, and there have been folks in the, in the burn area that have started to use this. And you meet the eligibility requirements, you get your geologic clearance issued. And if you have your other two clearances, you're ready to go and move through the process. Provided you're working with a geotechnical engineer who meets the requirements of the California Building Code. So we don't have any authority over the minimum standards of the California Building Code. So just to keep that in mind, certainly I can get deeper into the weeds on that, but just keep that in mind that if you do do the CZ rebuild directive route, your geotechnical engineer is responsible for making sure that you meet the minimum design standards of the California Building Code. If you follow the standard Chapter 1610 process, particularly if you're in the Atkins debris flow area, you can substitute the site specific geologic report for that Atkins study. In many instances, that's helped save tens of thousands of dollars for folks in not having to do that site specific geology. So a lot of words here, but again, take a look and I'll put my email in again at the, at the end if there are further questions. The Atkins debris flow study, just to go through this real quick. In the valley, we studied a number of drainages along the 236 corridor. So yours, it's hard to see, but the red is 236 and then Highway nine. The purple is some of the study areas and then the other colors are the primary and uncertain debris flow paths. So I'm just gonna tick through, just to explain this a little bit. This is Boulder Brook. This is some aerial imagery from 2020. This is what a lot of people have seen. This is kind of a terrain map. So this is what the topography looks like. This is the first set of data that came out of that study that was funded by the community foundation. So the the pink color, red, pink, reddish pink is the primary debris flow path. And then the pale yellow is the uncertain debris flow path. A lot of folks are familiar with this, but that was the first set of data that came out of that study. The second set of data, I'll show you in a second. But I just want to remind folks, as you look at some of this on our GIS website, I, I highlight this because the parcel layer in certain neighborhoods like this one in Boulder Brook does not reflect, is not accurate. The debris flow study is accurate to the topography. The topography is accurate. But you may need to work with your consultant team to make sure that you're looking at the right information and where your parcel lies in any given spot. The other data that came out of the study was debris flow depth. And you can see that there's actually another layer that shows the flow depths and the contour lines. So that, so in the valley, generally speaking, in most locations, the debris flow depth is, you know, one to four feet. So there's lots of instances where folks are able to do some mitigation measures to mitigate the hazard because the flow depths are not tremendously deep. The other piece that came out of that study was the debris flow velocity. Those two data points, the velocity and depth can be used by your consultant team to help design your foundation to meet the minimum building code requirements of the California Building Code. The last thing I want to touch on, and then I'm happy to answer as many questions as we have time for. And I know I've gone through this quickly, just to save as much time for questions is, as Supervisor McPherson said, we, we, we had our first big atmospheric river event of the season on the 24th. Some areas got north of 10 to 12 inches of rain, but fortunately it never came in the extreme exceedance levels to, to, to potentially cause a debris flow. But we want to make sure everybody's vigilant and is signed up for code red. And you can go to the SC. And you can go to the SCR nine eleven dot org. To register for code red, want to make sure everybody knows their zones. That will be how we notify you if you have an evacuation warning or an evacuation order. We've tried to pare down the size of those zones a little bit based on that Atkins study so that we only evacuate the folks that are in critical danger. That was another benefit of that study funded by the community foundation. And then just understanding and paying attention to all of the normal media channels to help you get prepared. If an event is, is forecasted, we'll certainly let you know. So I'll, I'll put this up for a second and then I'm happy to put my contact information again in the chat. But our little office or three office, there's myself, Tatiana, who I introduced as our recovery and resilience analyst. And then Lisa Erit is our emergency management analyst. So she's dealing with a lot of our EOC and emergency management work. And then Karen Adler is another critical support member of our team as well at OR three. So with that, I'll stop sharing and happy to help facilitate questions with JM. And anybody might have on any of that stuff or other things related to fire recovery.
Great. Thank you, Dave. And just again, to remind folks, you can raise your hand in Zoom or if you're on the phone, you can press star nine to let us know that you have a question. So I'm looking for any hands. Questions about fire recovery or three. See. Not seeing any right away.
I'll stick around when something comes up.
I don't know if Jim Mosher is trying to say something.
Jim, Jim, do you have a question about this topic?
On mute.
Yes, I, I can.
Maybe not.
There's no hand to raise on my screen, so that's why I haven't been able to raise my hand. I don't know if other people are having that same experience.
Well, I'm not sure we had folks able to do it earlier.
I had the hand at the previous presentation, but this, it went away. Anyway. I do have a question through. Can I go ahead or?
Yes, wait, is this about fire recovery, Jim?
This is about the debris flow alert system.
Sure.
That Dave talked about and is supervisor McPherson, as you know, on behalf of the friends of Santa Rosa Valley Water, we submitted a memorandum to you about the experience up here with the debris flow evacuation orders. Many of us got a code red automated phone call and text telling us that we needed to evacuate. Yet we were not in an evacuation zone. And when we called the emergency number, we were told to ignore the calls that we got with code red. It caused a lot of confusion up here. We weren't the only ones. We're in Felton zero zero three A, three B was to be evacuated, but not three A. But I've talked to, I probably have heard from 15 to 20 people here in Felton that got these calls who are not in an evacuation zone. And my second concern is that in fact, many of the evacuation zones, there is not a critical life threatening danger that people face. And the zone haven, if you cross reference the zone haven map with the Atkins map, you find that many of the, many of us are being told to evacuate because we may be facing a road closures and be trapped. And it's critical for people up here to know the reason for the evacuation. And I think that this is contributing to the evacuation fatigue up here. And then according to the press banner, only one third of those folks that the sheriff visited actually evacuated. And, and my understanding is that those are the folks who we really want to be sure are safe because they are in potentially life threatening situation if we have a big storm. So I'm wondering, well, if we have another one of these storms, is this code red? Automatic phone call is going to be fixed and can we have the map? Can we have the zone, the evacuation orders? Provide more information on the reason for the evacuation order, whether it's life threatening or because there may be, you may be trapped in your home for some days. An experience that many of us have experienced up here many, many times. Thank you.
Thanks, Jim. Maybe Steve, before you begin, or excuse not Steve, Dave, excuse me. Yeah, I did get your notice. Thank you, Jim. You had what five or six questions in the first go around and now you've added three or four more, which are legitimate. And I think that David, they will answer more concisely, but we are looking into it. I can tell you that, that we, we have to be more refined in how we address this for sure. But go ahead, Dave.
Yeah, thanks, Jim. I think you, you're very astute in the sense that we are in the process of refining some of the zones. Ironically, the Friday before the big storm, so it was like the Friday. Not directly before, so it was 10 days before the storm hit. We had a meeting with our fire chiefs in the San Lorenzo Valley, as well as our Cal Fire Chief to, to start planning the refinement of the zones based on the Atkins data. And then the forecasted storm hit us that following week and we were not able to fully implement the changes to zoning even based on that refine. So we are breaking up some of the larger zones into subzones. Based on that exact point where we want to try and focus and narrow who of that is evacuated to those that are in most danger. We also are refining the number of homes that they would go door to door to notice, to, to really refine that to those that are in most, in most imminent life, life safety if there was a debris flow. So we're definitely using the data to improve it. This storm was admittedly earlier and bigger in the season than we, we thought. We thought we had, we thought we had a few more weeks before the rains were going to hit when we had that meeting, you know, nine days prior. So we're making some improvements and then I will follow up with our netcom folks on the discrepancy. You said between Felton zero zero three A and three B, is that the two zones that you said were kind of?
It was, it was more than just our zones. There are people across Felton who got these calls erroneously.
Okay. Yeah, I'll look into that as well. I appreciate the, the, the update. And yeah, we definitely, we definitely are, are working with our local geologists to evaluate whether the thresholds for evacuation need to change. And we also recognize evacuation fatigue and we don't want to, and we want to be very prudent in when we use that tool of asking folks to evacuate. So definitely take that, that to heart. And then what I will say, just for clarity, because you brought this up, Jim, is under the reactions, there's a little button at the bottom of your, of your window that says reactions. It should have a little smiley face with a plus sign. For folks who don't know, if you click on that button, it should give you the option to raise your hand. So if folks aren't familiar, some of the different Zoom meeting setups are a little bit different where the hand is just there. And in this particular Zoom setup, that's where you find it.
Great. Thanks, Jim. Okay. Continuing on with questions regarding fire recovery or the OR three office, looks like Mary S. You can unmute and ask your question.
Okay, thank you. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay. So yeah, thanks for doing this. I think I'm really beginning to understand the pathway. I'm a real map person and I remember on, on the day of the board of supervisors meeting, there was a link for the GIS maps and, but now when I try to follow the directions on the OR three website, I can't get to those same maps. Am I? Is it because I don't understand the links or is there a new system that I, that's in place?
Yeah, let me look into that. Wait, so sorry, you said they were on which map, which maps on the website were?
So originally, yeah, they were on your OR three website. There was a link, but now when I follow the directions that are there, I think I got them from your website. I can't seem to get to the, the same maps.
Okay, let me, I'll have you email me and then let's, and then I can work through that with you offline.
Okay. And just one other question. So I'm trying to see if I have enough money to, to use the Atkins report and perhaps do the mitigation. So that's kind of up in the air. But I was also wondering if you were still going to do a permit calculator thing on your, on the website somewhere so that we can figure out how much the building permit, so I can figure out if I have enough money for the rebuild.
Yeah, I think so. Mary, great question. I think the best thing for you to do on that piece is it's, what we have found is that the permit costs are very site specific and project specific. And so the recovery permit center, if you start working through the preclearance process and you are saying, and you articulate that you're building like for like. You know, they're going to be able to give you a better sense of what those costs are. Many of the fees supervisor McPherson and the board reduced and eliminated. But we didn't build a calculator because it's very site specific.
Okay.
We do want it to be misleading. So the recovery permit center is well versed in giving you a sense of what those costs are.
Okay, that's good to know. Thank you for that information.
Thanks, Mary. Next up, I saw the hand from Kirsten Flynn. Kirsten, you can unmute yourself and ask your question.
I would love for David to maybe run through what the, well, I wrote down the name of it, but now I can't find my piece of paper. What the changes are to the septic requirements? Or how to, how those might be best worked with for fire rebuilding families?
Yeah. So, so I'm, I'm not the expert. Marilyn Underwood from our environmental health team, for, for those of you who worked with her through the debris removal is our, our lamp guru. But for fire families, the general consensus information that I've been sharing is we want it to the, to the greatest extent possible, we want to use your existing systems. That's going to be the cheapest path for most of you. And so what that means is you can build like for like. You can, there is some ways in which you can add square footage to your home. If you, if you're not adding a bedroom. The bedroom count is one of the critical pieces in defining the size of a septic system. So there are ways to build a slightly larger home. Provided you're not adding a quote study or, or reading room or something that could be construed as a bedroom. And then obviously there's, there's a couple of processes where you have to have the, the site inspected, the septic system and septic leach fields inspected to make sure they weren't damaged and they're still functioning. For those of you that are on the highway 236 corridor in particular. If you do have septic issues or maybe your septic system was struggling or potentially failing, there is a path where we are offering folks the opportunity to sign a document that basically says if the county is able to embark upon a searing project, which basically is extending the CSA that serves the Boulder Creek Gulf and Country Club area. If we're able to extend that project in the next five years, and that's definitely a work program that Tatiana and I will be working on. But if we're able to extend that or start working on that in earnest. As long as you agree to tie into that system, you don't need to upgrade your septic system now. So our hope is that we can provide a solution to a lot of the 236 residents who have particularly challenging septic issues with that project in the, in the coming years. So I hope that helps answer some of the questions.
Yeah, thank you very much.
Yeah, there are very specific things about groundwater separation between the old regulations and new regulations and setback requirements. I don't have them off the top of my head. I do think we're, we're trying to consolidate all that information and have that available on our website.
I often try to take good notes, not so much because I need them, but because I, you know, want to take care of my Clear Creek neighbors and not all of them usually show up for these meetings. So.
Thank you.
Thanks, Kirsten. Okay, Karen Vitale, you can unmute yourself.
Thank you. It seems like a relatively minor comment in the scope of things, but I've noticed that recently the county of Santa Cruz updated their website, the homepage. And it's almost impossible to find the recovery information. I've, I've been stubborn and finally did find it under environmental health. But the stuff that used to be in a banner up at the top so that we could figure out the CZU recovery process is now gone and that stuff does get updated. So I'm, I look at it at least once a week. So I'd like to say, you know, sort of as a public service would be really good to make that easy to find again. It's very frustrating when you're first digging through to find out where the heck it went.
Yeah. So let me share with everybody because that's a good point. I noticed the other day that that banner and our COVID banner disappeared. There's two ways that you can get to the recovery information. Under the departments tab at the top of our county pipe page, and why don't I just go ahead and share my screen again, just so that folks can see this. So hide that. So the county's website looks like this now. As Karen said, there used to be some banners at the top that said CZU fire and COVID. Those are no longer here. If you go under the departments tab, you could come down to our office, the Office of Response Recovery and Resilience. You can click there and you can get to the recovery information. And all of the things therein. Or the other way that you can get there is through the planning department website. So if you click on the planning department, there still is a button for CZU lightning fire and that will bring you to the recovery permit center page. So great feedback, Karen, on that piece. And I'll see if there's a place on that landing page where we can still keep that a little bit more prevalent. And I'll stop sharing.
Okay. Thank you again, Karen. Any other questions for Dave Reed on, on fire recovery or other work that his office is undertaking? All right. Thank you, Dave and Tatiana both for being here this evening. We have about 20 minutes left in the scheduled time with the community tonight. And so I wanted to open the floor up to questions not related to our topics we've already covered. If there's any sort of more general topic that folks have a question on for for the supervisor or staff, we're happy to entertain those now. And again, you can raise your hand and mute through reactions and you can press star nine if you're joining us by phone. Okay, Jim Mosher, you have another question, so I'm going to ask you to unmute.
Can you hear me now?
We can, yes.
Great. And I learned how to raise my hand, so. Yes, this is a question a few supervisor McPherson and has to do with what you talked about briefly at the beginning of the meeting, which is the redistricting process. And I'm interested in your thoughts about what happened today at the board of supervisors meeting. And just to give folks a little background, I was actually the person that you appointed to the advisory commission to advise the district, the board on how to do the redistricting. And our commission met starting in July and had several meetings. And the proposal that was that one of the two proposals a week we're considering for district five was one, whether Scotts Valley, the rest of Scotts Valley should be brought into Scott, into district five. Right now Scotts Valley is split. The portion west of 17 is in our district, the portion east is in district one. And the other proposal, well, one of the other proposals was to move, make district five more rural district, include Bonny Doone and move west. And we had comments, not much public participation, but we had more comments actually about needing district five to represent more of the mountain area and less of Scotts Valley. And we did have some people from Scotts Valley who And we did have some people from Scotts Valley who asked that uh Scotts Valley be brought together. Uh, we considered these uh proposals and for a variety of reasons, I, I don't want to go into that now. Uh, but for a variety of reasons, the commission uh uh proposed no changes to District Five after considering uh uh, a lot of input and from staff and from uh looking at the maps and understanding some of the challenges with the rebuilding process for folks and changing supervisor offices might not be a good thing at this time. In any case, we took those recommendations to the board. The board met last week, there were no comments. And then here at the last moment, uh, the mayor of Scotts Valley writes a letter to the board saying they want to uh bring Scotts Valley whole into District Five. And uh, the board uh uh is now seriously considering this possibility. And it, it is last minute when people have very limited time uh to uh comment on it and to get involved. And so I'm dismayed by the process apart from the uh, you know, I, uh, the commission put a lot of time into this and a lot of thought and the board uh didn't ask for any, uh, any of us to uh brief them on why we uh came up with the proposal that we did. Uh, so I'm, I'm just surprised and I wondered if you had any comments about the process and any advice to folks on how we might influence this decision and get involved.
Yeah, thank you, first of all, for being uh my appointee to that redistricting commission. And it was a timeline because usually you can take about a year to get to this. And because of COVID now, um, and delayed census, because you want to have the five supervisory districts of which the County Board of Supervisors can determine where those district lines are drawn, unlike the federal congressional and state assembly and senate districts are drawn, that's by a state commission. Um, I was uh kind of set back and surprised myself frankly about um the vote today, that it brought more information to the board, uh, including, uh, I think there's four different proposed maps. Um, and um, I, I was really concerned that um, this hasn't been really discussed or brought to fruition uh or brought to the point of the commission before this in such a strong manner. But we do need to have more public input. We are going to be meeting again to discuss this. We have to approve this by December uh as a Board of Supervisors or the state will come in and draw the lines for us. So it's important we get this done ourselves. Um, and I do think there needs, there will be more public input. The meeting, and we have a time specific, a week from today, Tuesday, uh, the sixteenth at ten forty five in the board chamber, but it is a virtual meeting, so you could address the board at that. But we need more uh input from Scotts Valley and San Lorenzo Valley residents uh that can give us some, you know, uh, some of their opinions on this brought to the board. But the, the main issue you're talking to is uh, the city of Scotts Valley would like to be whole uh in one district. Uh, each of the cities in the four cities in Santa Cruz are split between at least two districts, um, not evenly, but there's a piece of some put out, so it's not unusual. Um, they, some people think there's an advantage to that because it gets the city and county uh representatives to talk more to each other. I think there has been some really good um um cooperative ventures between Scotts Valley and San Lorenzo Valley recently with the Santa Margarita Water Management District that we're about to complete as well. Uh, there was an emergency water situation, but um, I, um, even though I said, okay, we'll, we'll delay this to discuss it next week, uh, but I'm not sure that how the, the board will go. There seemed to be uh three supervisors uh that not including me that had spoken in favor of this becoming uh Scotts Valley becoming, getting into one supervisory district that would be mine. Uh, there were some proposals to do much of the same to take, but just to take a piece of the University of California. Uh, we have the faculty housing there, but uh, uh, that, that was not really brought up seriously at this meeting yesterday or today. So, um, I, I, um, I'm really hesitant to change. I think people like stability and where they are. It's critical and it's, it's uh legal. Legally, you have to get the district split up into five. Uh, we're talking population, not voters. Uh, we have about population of two hundred and seventy, two thousand, so it's fifty four, fifty five thousand people per district, and you have to be within five percent of each other uh to, to have equality among the, the five districts. Um, it's complicated. Uh, I was um really uh kind of surprised that this came up on so strong. And there's four different maps I believe we're going to be looking at. Uh, I do, I can't tell you how the board might go, but that's the way it came up today. And uh I'm not, I, I truly can't predict how it might turn out. But um I am a little dismayed about the, the late entry of this uh in the process. And I, I can, I can assure assume that, as you have said, you are too, because you've spent a lot, the five commissioners, the commission appointees spent a lot of time on this. And there were two relatively minor changes that were going to, it seemed to be moving forward. And then some of these other suggestions came up. So rather than we have, we do have the time, but not much time left. And so that's why the, the board decided to continue it at this time.
Hey. Thank you, Jim, for that question. Again, thank you for your service on that commission. Um, I'll ask again for any other hands on topics uh that we haven't covered this evening. Uh, the supervisor in the chat. Um, uh, Karen is asking if we could provide more detail around the Big Basin Water System and potential consolidation with SLV water. Would you like to field that one? And I'm happy to um provide some additions as well.
Yeah, and uh, Jam, you and I have been engaged in this and trying to make this become a reality more than a year ago. Um, uh, we didn't see a disaster coming like the fires, but uh that really kind of flipped the switch to uh have Big Basin say, we just don't have the the financial resources to upgrade. And thankfully, the San Lorenzo Valley Water District, as I mentioned, with uh Rick Rogers, and I attended their meeting Thursday night. Uh, we want to look into it. It goes, has to go the local for agency formation commission. Um, and it will take some time. It'll take grant money from the state and federal government, probably the state in particular to make something happen there. Uh, this could be a at least a year or two year long process to get through the whole process. Uh, in the meantime, I think San Lorenzo Valley Water District will be moving forward to serve the customers of Big Basin. I, I don't want to put the owners on their back, but they have been tremendous neighbors to provide water for the Big Basin customers. As I said, there's about just short of five hundred connections up there. But uh, I am very anxious to make this happen ASAP and um, it's, it's gotta happen. Uh, I think one of the things that the the Big Basin customer, and we don't have jurisdiction over it, as I think I said, it's a uh a private company, so the California Public Utilities Commission has the control over that. And so it's really uh up to the state officials to say, you've got to do something and let's move on and get it going right now. And they have heard us loud and clear, not unlike the PG&E with uh the PUC now too. Uh, so I feel very good. It takes more time than you want, but I think for, I feel better now than I ever have that uh Big Basin will have ample and uh consistent water in the in the next year or two. And uh, we're going to do everything we can to make that happen as quickly as possible. And Jam, you've um, attended several of our meetings and a couple while we've been independent on a couple of them. Do you have any other added comments that you'd like to make on that?
Um, I would only just say that um, what, what'll take place, I believe, over the next few months is that the San Lorenzo Valley Water District will do its due diligence in terms of um engineering studies and so on, to just determine what from an infrastructure perspective um would be required to uh fully hook into the system as well as um just evaluating uh potential future costs. And then um, we'll, we'll be bringing that information back to their board. Um, and so that's, that's the next few months and we can continue to update the community on, on that. Um, and I wonder if, if um Dave Reed would want to just add some comments about how this piece uh fits into um strategic objectives of not only the county, but also um the State Water Resources Control Board.
Yeah, thanks, Jim. I think um, I'm, I'm deeply heartened, as Supervisor McPherson said, by the um, the Board of, of the San Lorenzo Valley Water District to consider this effort. Um, it really does build resilience for the entire valley to consolidate these small water districts like Brackett Grave, Forest Springs and Big Basin into the, the San Lorenzo Valley Water District. Um, I think long term having uh that unification will be a, a really um powerful uh tool for resilience um as we continue to face impacts from climate change. So we're wanting to be as supportive as we can. As, as Supervisor said, we don't have jurisdiction over it, but whatever ways we can be of, of service and support to the, the, the Water District. We want to do that because this is a tremendous opportunity to bring consistent water um to all of those customers in Big Basin. It's a great way to address some of the concerns of the fire families who are rebuilding, who've been concerned about water supply for some of the new code requirements around hydrants and sprinkler systems. Um, so it's just, uh, it's a tremendous opportunity. It's a generational opportunity to consolidate these water districts. So really hopeful that it all works out and we can find the right resources to support the ratepayers of Big Basin as well as to support the district.
And I would just add to that, this is an opportunity to keep ownership of the water local. Um, rather than the company selling to potentially an out of, out of area provider. Um, and I would just add to that, um, there's unprecedented amounts of grant funding on the state and federal level for infrastructure projects. And we're just starting to learn about some of those details, especially on the federal package. But um, but this is, this is, this, this opportunity is coming at an advantageous time from a from a financial perspective that could help us um quite significantly reduce the cost to ratepayers. Um, Karen, you had asked that question. I see you have your hand up again. Um, you're the only one who has your hand up, so I'm happy to call on you again if you like to just, if you have a quick follow up question.
Yes, I, I do. Um, can you hear me now?
Yes.
Messages on my screen. Okay, so um, I guess for us, as Dave touched on briefly, for the fire families, the challenge is it looks like, um, you know, in my, my discussions with Chief Bingham, that unless we put tanks on the property to feed water to our fire suppression system, they're not going to, the fire department will not sign off on a certificate of occupancy. That's the current. That's what I heard from him the last time I spoke with him. And um, I, I, I think there's a whole rabbit hole of issues that come up with that. One of them is the cost of the tanks. The other is an entire neighborhood full of the tanks if everyone decides to go ahead with building. And the, the third is, is just, you know, are the, the lots themselves suitable for these multiple water tanks that would have to be involved? So the, the timeline for SLV consolidation um of bringing in neighborhoods like the Forest Springs Water Association, those issues start to become really critical. And I know Sean Machado, who's the, the head of the board there at Forest Springs is on the call too. But I just want to bring up the fact that I, I know you guys have been pushing on this issue for a year, but for us rebuilding people, now we're looking at, say, if we get rebuilt in nine months, say if we get rebuilt in a year, let's be really super optimistic. Um, we have to address putting water into our uh fire suppression system. And as of right now, we can't unless we put tanks up.
Dave, would you like to field that?
That's the first, um, that's the first I've heard of that with Chief Bingham. So I think um, you know, Jam and I can reach out to the chief and maybe have a conversation with him as well as the Water District. Um, and make sure that we're all on the same page. And if there's some near term um lower hurdles that we can, we can accommodate, because it certainly makes sense that if we're going to consolidate and the water pressure is coming to make you spend the money on water tanks, um, that seems punitive. So we can look into that for sure.
Yeah, we'll follow up with you on that, Karen. Um, we have about three minutes left. Um, I'll open it up again just for one additional question if anyone has it uh on, on any topic. I'm not seeing anything, so supervisor, I'll turn it over to you to make some just closing comments.
Well, I just want to thank everyone uh for participating this evening. It was great to have the opportunity to share uh what our office is working on and to hear your questions and, and your feedback. Um, and we, we will follow up and get touch, and please do not hesitate to get in touch with our office. I want to thank Steve Wiesner again and Dave Reed for participating tonight. The recording of the meeting would be posted on my website at County and uploaded to my office uh Facebook page. We've scheduled another town hall meeting at five thirty on Wednesday, December eighth to hear updates on the Boulder Creek Ranch Library. And there's some really nice things going to happen there. The Felton Library has been a phenomenal addition to the valley, and you're going to be very pleased with the uh with the Boulder Creek Ranch Library System too. And we'll have other topics as well, but that'll be a main one because it's about ready to get going and opening. Uh, so if there is a topic that you would like uh us to cover, please send an email to fifth dot district at Santa Cruz County dot U S. That's fifth dot district at Santa Cruz County dot U S. And then we can uh have those uh subject matters included in our December eighth meeting at five thirty. Uh, so I appreciate very much your enthusiasm and your attention that you're, you're giving to this. Uh, we will uh try to answer any uh hanging, hangover questions, shall we say, that uh that we can get answers to. Uh, we will, we will get them to you as soon as possible. Uh, again, I want to thank Steve Wiesner and Dave Reed for participating. And everybody, have a great, nice wet evening, but I think the rain has stopped for now. So have a good one. See you later. Good night.